Hello. Thank you for tuning in today. We apologize for the technical difficulty experienced during the Board of Education public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2022 operating budget. The technical difficulties prevented the live reading of submitted comments by community members. Please note, your comments have been submitted to the board members for their review. The Board asked that we share the comments prior to their February 10 budget discussion. We are offering the following three ways to inform the public of the comments received: this reading on FCPSTV channel 18, in addition Frederick County Public Schools Maryland YouTube channel, and the reading of the written comments as posted on Board Docs. These opportunities will ensure that the public has heard all comments prior to the Board's meeting on February 10. At this time, Randy Gray, Frederick County Public Schools Communications Coordinator, will read each comment received. As with normal Board practice and as advertised to the community, we will only read three minutes of the comments. However, the entire written comments are posted on Board Docs. Thank you for your advocacy.
Thank you, Darrell. Our first comment comes from Tabitha Lemus. Praise the Lord, hope all is well. Does the budget allow for children to celebrate birthdays, historical and national events, rather than fictitious holidays that have no solid foundational view? These children work hard to listen and learn and deserve to be celebrated the day God allowed them to be born. 2022, refocused and directed in God's view. Again, that comment from Tabitha Lemus. The best way to support students in the aftermath of this pandemic is to reduce class sizes. You can do this in several ways outside the box that do not require external costs such as space allocations. You can double up, don't require external cost, doubling up teachers in the classroom so you have a forced co-teaching model, or you can pair the special educator with the classroom teacher for a majority of the day. That special education teacher and/or interventionist can specifically work with two grade levels and support two classrooms. You can allocate assistance for each grade level and they can help reduce the class sizes in rooms. All this requires is intentional grouping and scheduling. Reduced class sizes give you the most bang for your buck. You can suspend all the extra support staff that only get to see students once a week or check-ins. The consistency of the teacher is the most impactful week or check-ins. And for teachers to be at their best, they need smaller groups of students. A kindergarten room with 28 students ensures that needs cannot be met. Teachers should have no more than 25 students. 20 to 23 is ideal. If you want to save money, have you considered having already employed staff that received the benefits do extra jobs? That way, you don't have to increase your people cost. For example, drivers being lunch monitors, lunch ladies being assistants in classrooms after their cafeteria duties, instead of working three hours and going home. That would create a sense of community. I could use a very competent driver and/or lunch support to manage a small group and go over skills with students. This would allow me to fully engage with another small group. Learning is a higher form of fine dining. To be successful, it requires quality ingredients, curriculum, portion control, students, and effective fabulous end product, a delicious and appetizing meal, growth progress, and student love of learning. Teaching is a craft. Amount of students matter. Thank you for your consideration to this costly but so very effective request. That comment from Rachel Sorenson. Now Beau Imbry has a very short comment. He supports funding for armed officers at every school and funding for teacher pay raise. Next, we have, I submitted a request regarding the proposed budget every year since I've lived in Lansdale. I'll submit the request again, knowing how truly important and urgent the request is for Green Valley Elementary School. The teachers and staff do an amazing job at that school and are fully committed to having engaged and supported students. I see nothing more important than continuing to invest in our teachers in their engagement and support, as well as ongoing resources for them and learning opportunities. That said, please do seriously consider providing funding for the school and students at Green Valley Elementary for the following. One, building improvements. The building is well past due for serious improvements, much less could benefit from a tear down and rebuild altogether. I have listed before the details of the quality of the building, but anyone who visits that school can quickly see why. How are there no walls? That is incredibly unsafe. There are not even regular bathrooms throughout the school, just the single bathroom units, some in classrooms, and some in random hallways only separated by movable bookshelves. Two, safety. This school needs a perimeter. Being off Route 80, how is there no perimeter? It's not that far back from the road and we know frequently, or that community frequently walks through the fields and cut through the property, which is such a safety concern. Centerville has a perimeter. We need to focus on our kids' safety. Three, resources and materials. They need updated materials, books, technology, a gym. That school has absolutely nothing. Please do consider this feedback. If nothing more, go in and see the school and honestly ask yourself if you would want your kids attending that school. Thanks for your time. Stephanie Birdsong. Our next comment comes from Laura Rosano. There is over $1 million budgeted for textbooks. They are a waste. Both my children have math textbooks that sit on a shelf. They are simply not used. There seems to be a lot of spending at the administrative level. Get rid of it. The busing has a large chunk. Is the redistricting to blame? Why are children on buses for longer amounts of time resulting in extra expenditures? Again, that comment from Laura Rosano. Our next comment. Why do you think it's okay to have a closed-off meeting because of COVID, but you think it's okay to send kids and teachers back to school? The hypocrisy is astounding to me. Also, if you send everyone back, even in a partial capacity, have you even thought of potential teacher shortages? Districts across the country that have tried to bring teachers and students back have seen large amounts of teachers taking leave or quitting. Is making Governor Hogan happy and appealing to COVID deniers, anti-maskers really worth the lives of teachers and students? That comment from Eric Solander. Our next comment comes from Jonathan Kurtz. I am the coordinator for the Academy for the Fine Arts. Over the past four years, I have been pleased to watch this program grow and thrive. We are currently expected to enroll around 100 students next year, which is a 75% increase from four years ago. As a county program, college and career prep program, we need the proposed budget fully funded. Our computer labs are non-functional and we are tasked with instructing students in the latest in digital art and music production. Computers are in the budget for next year and we need them to stay as we teach students from all 10 FCPS high schools. Additionally, we will be installing a dance studio space for next school year in the hopes of adding a new focus area in musical theater. We are very excited about the growth we are experiencing and hope the trend continues. We encourage the Board of Ed in the future to create a separate line item for the Academy for Fine Arts, as it is a county program that is housed inside TJ High. Currently TJ High receives no outside funding to meet the financial needs of the AFA and account for students from other schools coming into the building. Again, that comment from Jonathan Kurtz. Our next comment. I'm just saddened by the lack of support for teachers this year. We have worked so hard to completely transform to virtual, and although we understand this is a hard time on school, parents, students, we don't realize why the change. We feel underappreciated. We expected to return when the numbers were lower, but now we are being asked to return to hybrid when numbers are so high. What's going to happen if a student gets sick? A teacher loses their life? I'm pregnant. What's going to happen if I get sick? School is important, but lives are more important. That's from Alexandra Barlow. Not budget-oriented, I just want you to know you have a large base of support for opening up schools to hybrid. I have read and watched the communicated information on the school's plan to open safely and think it is thorough. My daughters need this for their mental well-being, like so many others in the community. Please stand strong and get those doors open for our children. Thank you. That comment from Sean Harrison. Our next comment comes from Jessica Study. The children need to be back in school, and this is coming from a parent whose child has a 4.75 GPA. Now more than ever, the kid's social and emotional health is at risk. Childcare staff, retail staff, and restaurant staff have all been back to work. Not returning our children to schools sends a loud and clear message that teachers' lives are more important than everyone else that's currently working, and some have never stopped working. If Maryland continues to keep kids on virtual learning, they will fall far behind other states and other countries. Do we really want to do this? Comment from Jessica Study. Our next comment comes from Karen Brown. No budget unless our kids are in school. My child is so far behind. No pay for teachers striking during school hours, even if it's a day off for students, because the teachers need a full day to compute grades, so it is still a workday. Again, that from Karen Brown. Our next comment. Frederick County has not had to provide school bus service to approximately 44,000 FCPS students since March 13 of 2020. The fuel savings from not having to provide school bus service must be immense, not to mention the extra fuel savings alone from bus service to FCPS students for sporting events, et cetera. I'd like to know what was done with that surplus money that was dedicated to fuel alone? And during this time also, what budget must take into consideration the actual savings FCPS incurred without having to use funds for bus fuel or even FCPS vehicles used for other transportation needs not used during the school closures? That comment from Brian Moore. Our next comment from Cassandra Bazano. My recommendations for the budget would be supporting, one, virtual learning platforms and technology. Keep the innovation momentum. Two, safety. Whatever is needed to get the school safely open for fall 2021, including a good air purifier, UV light ventilation system, windows that can open safely as weather permits, anything to bury your desk in between each student to allow for proper six feet spacing, N95 mask, and cleaning supplies in every room. Number three, education. Educate the school community on caring for each other. Communications on wear a mask, distance, stop your ongoing house parties, care about those around you and not just yourself. Think carefully before you send your kids to school sick or after a trip to Disney, for example. Lots of education is needed for parents who do not take the virus seriously, some teachers too. And ease up on the in-person strictness around attendance. I know there is funding when kids are in-person school, but this creates a situation where kids come to school sick and now can spread a deadly virus. This policy needs to be updated. Number four, security guard in each school, not one that rotates around. Thank you. Cassandra Bazano. Our next comment. The most urgent conversation the Board should be having this week is about the implementation of the hybrid schedule. The discussion about the 2022 budget can wait. It's absurd to me that the Board can't meet in person, but we are talking about sending kids and teachers back to school in February when we are so close to actually having teachers vaccinated. Every teacher should have the opportunity to have their vaccine before being required to go back into buildings. We didn't open schools back in September when COVID was much more under control, so why the rush to open now and put teachers at risk when we are so close to having teachers vaccinated? Getting one extra month of in-person instruction in by starting in February instead of March is not worth the risk of putting teachers' health and lives on the line. I urge the Board to revisit the reopening decision at this week's meeting and table the 2022 budget for a future meeting if necessary in order to make space for this critical discussion. That comment from Jennifer Reinhardt. Next up, Kelly Fink says, you should spend your money on making sure that teachers can be vaccinated. At this point, they are so overwhelmed and terrified, they need serious mental health care services. Don't let the governor's flailing political climbing be Frederick County Public Schools' legacy. Next, from Christopher McCormick. What plans or items are in the FCPS budget plan to address the money needed to provide effective personal protective equipment, PPE, to each and every educator and building employee? Specifically, money for N95 grade protective mask for all teachers and building employees provided on a daily basis, no reuse from day to day? Now for our next comment. I would like to know how the funding for IEP, Individualized Education Program students, is being used. I have talked to many parents who said their students are not receiving all of their accommodations or are receiving subpar virtual substitutes. Not providing these services is a violation of IDEA. I'm sure you are aware this is a federal law. Unfortunately, many special needs students have been left behind in the virtual setting, and this is unacceptable. That comes from Kristen K. Our next comment from Holly Nelson. Thank you for prioritizing employee pay steps. We have all taken on some unusual burdens this year, and we need a step increase to keep pace with the increase in cost of living and the extra effort we are putting into our jobs. Now for our next comment. Hi, it's my pleasure to write feedback about FCPS schools and especially Green Valley Elementary. I recently moved to Frederick County from Montgomery, and I was so happy and impressed with FCPS schools. Teachers are really great, and they are focusing all students individually and teaching great. Education is very mandatory in our life and helps to grow personally and community. So I believe schools should get enough budgets for our children. Thank you. That comes from J. Araman, Soundar Rajan. Next comment. The way that the budget is described as being spent and what is detailed on the graphs shows a lot of discrepancy. The document states that the majority of the operating budget, 85.4% funds, 85.4% funds employees' salaries and benefits. Total compensation and benefits account for over $598.9 million. The remaining 14.6%, or 102.3 million, of operating budget is allocated to non-compensation costs. These costs being instructional supplies and materials for schools, technology services and computers, tuition for special education students attending non-public schools, transportation services, including bus purchases, repairs and fuel, utilities, maintenance costs for buildings, contracted services, supplies and equipment, which is what we need for our children. However, what is displayed on the graph shows $413.1 million plus $102.3 million, which is salary and benefits totaling $515.4 million, which only leaves 102.3 million for everything else. I am in total agreement that teachers need to be fairly compensated and that their benefits should be comparable to any other job. I am just going to, I am just wondering how much of this is going to actual teachers and how much is going to those not instructing in a classroom? Also, this budget doesn't seem to be balanced at all if over 90%, of it goes to salary and benefits, and only a small portion goes to everything else. Please explain. That comes from Christopher Springs. Now a very short comment, three words, from Aidan Atwood. Open the schools. Our next comment comes from a student. Why are you all asking the students this, like our input was ever valid? My voice has been ignored for years. I could care less about this budget. Malachi Cook. Our next comment. Science has now proven that students, unless medically compromised, can be in-person. There should not be such a focus on the online and distance learning funding and more on the in-person funding. This increase is going to trickle down to the families that have been impacted the most by the state's current events, and this is unfair to all of them. You have empty schools that should not receive increases in funding unless they get these kids back full-time. Considering the amount of employees not working, buses not running, and schools not in operation, the amount needed should be balanced, if not reduced, from last year. If you are unable to do that, you should not be holding such a position given this task. Mandy Tyar. Our next comment comes from Samantha Wilt. Please support any and all mental health expansion within FCPS, including the several CAS, Community Agency School Services, and other mental health positions being requested. During healthy, positive times, mental health is critical, but as we are still in a worldwide pandemic, it becomes even more essential. Please do what you can to support FCPS meeting student needs by approving the growth of mental health resources within our schools. Again, Samantha Wilt. Our next comment is a video link from Jennifer Reynolds. Jennifer Reynolds says, please view the following link. And I'll read that again for you. From Jennifer Reynolds, please view this link. www.wevideo, one word, W-E-video, dot com slash view slash 2014-711-640. Our next comment comes from Taylor Stewart. Please get the Tuscarora swim team a new record board. The current one is pitiful compared to the other schools. Colin Schulzeberger says, please allocate this money towards special needs equipment for PE countywide and sensory music equipment for general music classrooms. I think this is a great way to meet cross-curricular objectives and to build community among the different subjects. Rob Holst says, we need to fully fund the salary pool, including the additional mental health positions. Also, the BOE needs to look at allocating funds to recondition the stadium and add field turf at Brunswick High School, Catoctin High, Governor Thomas Johnson High, and Walkerville High School. Other county schools have much newer and nicer facilities. While the facilities at the aforementioned schools are dilapidated, old, and cause an unneeded safety and financial burden. Again, Rob Holst. Janet Bass says, I understand the push to get kids back in school, however, this seems like a bad time. We have full hospitals, out-of-control spread, and not enough vaccinations. Teachers are a valuable asset. Now a comment from Ryan Hines. Thank you for taking a few moments to review data on an issue that continues to widen the equity gap between the 10 FCPS high schools. In 2017, FCPS introduced the new position of Coordinator of Athletics and Facilities as a pilot program with the intention of phasing in two additional schools each subsequent year. Since the introduction of the new position, no additional schools have been added until this past week. In the job description for an athletic director, FCPS defines the position as the Executive Director of the Athletic Department. No other school-based employee other than the principal is responsible for as many students, staff, and supervision as the athletic director. On average, 38% of a school's population is made up of student athletes. On average, ADs are responsible for 87 contracted and volunteer coaches. On average, ADs are responsible for processing roughly $250,000 in gate receipts, equipment purchases and invoices, athletic fees, and contracts. Athletic directors are responsible for the supervision of all student athletes, coaches, and the thousands of community members who attend events on a yearly basis. On average, there are 83 home-based events each year, which sets a workday for the athletic director from 7:15 in the morning until 9:45 at night. For the other 97 days of the school year, athletic directors are not free to leave at 2:45, as the responsibility of supervising athletes and coaches extends well beyond the school day. We are asking the Board to help us by making space in this year's budget to remove the teaching responsibility from the athletic director's position. As the Executive Director of the Athletic Department, we are frequently removed from classroom instruction to handle student athlete or coach issues, reschedule events, handle transportation issues, respond to facilities issues, attend required meetings, and many other items that pop up on a regular basis. These frequent breaks in classroom instruction prevent us from effectively creating a classroom flow and put a strain on the students in the class, as well as other staff members who must cover those classes. Since the introduction of the Coordinator of Athletics and Facilities position, the responsibilities of the athletic director have continued to increase in response to events that have happened within the county and within the state. There are several data points that we would like you to consider in reference to a much needed change. FCPS athletic directors have 64 itemized responsibilities they must meet each school year. Not included in that list is the supervision at after-school events. Not included in that list is the responsibility to be a classroom teacher. In a meeting with County Supervisor of Athletics Kevin Kendrow and FCPS Director of School Management Dan Lippi, both agreed that athletic directors conservatively need 1,517 hours yearly to complete all of the listed responsibilities. On top of the athletic responsibilities, athletic directors are also .5 classroom teachers requiring an additional 672 hours at a minimum for three and a half hours of instruction and in-service over the course of the 180 days. When you also include the athletic director's supervisory roles during the school day, an additional 60 hours per year are added and bring the total working hours to 2,249. The total hours an athletic director is contracted to work over the span of their 198-day contract is 1,594 hours. This difference accounts for an additional 655 hours ADs are required to work per year above their contract. By removing classroom instruction of three and a half By removing classroom instruction of three and a half hours per day for 180 days, you could remove 630 of those hours. And unfortunately, our time is up for that. That's three, over three minutes. And again, that comment comes from Ryan Hines. That concludes our comments. Thank you.